Everyone to this first inquiry of the Special Parliamentary Committee on Children and Youth Well-being. This committee that was recently put together by the Parliament with the support of our development partners, especially the United Nations, more particularly UNICEF. So I welcome each and every one of us to this first session. Let me begin also by acknowledging our committee members who have assembled this morning to start the first ever inquiry of this Special Parliamentary Committee. To my left, I'll start with Honorable Sashindra Mutuval, Governor of West New Britain. I thank him for his attendance today. Also to my right, sorry, to my right is a member for WAU Waria, Honorable Marsh Narawak, is also the chairman of the ICT, Parliamentary ICT Committee. To my left, the member for Menemya, Honorable Solen Loifa, is also the Vice Minister assisting the Prime Minister. And further to the left, Honorable Francis Yori Alua, Member for Karumui Saltnumane, is also the Vice Minister for Justice and Attorney General. I thank them for making time and being in attendance today, first ever inquiry of our Special Parliamentary Committee. Some other members of our committee will also arrive, I hope, soon to participate in this inquiry. Member for North East in particular has indicated that he will attend. Just for the record too, I pass the apologies of our Deputy Chair and Member for North Boganville, Honorable Francisca Semoso. But otherwise, I want to acknowledge the Acting Secretary for Health, Mr Ken Wai, and your team for being present with us today to start the inquiry. I acknowledge our team from UNICEF. Thank you, UNICEF, and our other development partners. I acknowledge to the members of the media fraternity who were able to attend today. This proceeding of the inquiry will be live streamed all across the nation. Very important that we reach out to our people, parents, young men and women, children of our country for this important inquiry. Let me begin by, you know, giving us a bit of a perspective, backdrop to the inquiries and the work of the committee so we understand the context and can have a positive sort of a dialogue between ourselves as members of the committee and all the other departments and provincial government who will be appearing today and tomorrow. As everybody knows, it's a very important milestone for us this year, 50th anniversary of the journey of our country, our people, our nation, Papua New Guinea. It's no coincidence now that we have this Special Parliamentary Committee on Children and Youth Well-being. It is timely that in the last 50 years, we have given all we can to our children, to the nation in all aspects of development. But looking forward into the next 50 years, we have to start reflecting on how far we've come and what we need to do to ensure that the next 50 years is much greater, more successful, and we can live the life of our people. And I want to thank in this respect the Parliament, the national government, for agreeing to have this Special Parliamentary Committee on Children and Youth Well-being. The message I believe that the Parliament is conveying to all of us is that for the next 50 years, this is the time for us to focus on our children. They are the generation that will take this country, this nation, to 2075, when our country becomes 100 years. We, all of us who are parents now, adults, our time has been the last 50 years up to now. Now it's time for all of us to think about our children. And we, members of Parliament now, and all of you too in the bureaucracy, different departments, government agencies, in the provincial government, local level government, our development partners, what we do now will define the life, quality of life and well-being and prosperity of our people and our nation in the next 50 years. It's very important that we have this conversation now. As I indicated earlier on, we have done what we can for our children in the last 50 years. But the reality now, everyone, Secretary and your team in health, you all know, all the other department who will be coming before the inquiry, we all know too, we still face many challenges to secure a conducive environment for children to grow up in and the support that they need to have a great life. In health sector, immunization is still a challenge, with many provinces still at about 50% or 60% coverage between 0 to 10 years. Yesterday, we launched the second phase of the polio immunization. Across the country, I think it's about 86%, only in a few provinces we've gone past 100% immunization. But the fact is that there is no 100% immunization. So we all challenged even in that area. Nutrition is still a major challenge for children. Poor nutrition is affecting mental and physical growth, which stunning a major problem in PNG. Our children, the fact is that they are getting smaller physically, and probably their mind too is getting smaller. That should be a big concern for all of us because we are not preparing our children well. And that means that the future might not be as great as it could be. It should be a big concern to all of us, absolutely a great concern to us as members of Parliament and more particularly this committee. Education is still a major challenge too, with retention from primary to secondary being a major concern. And of course, at the tertiary level, it's still a privilege, but only 5 to 10% of our children are going to tertiary education, colleges and universities. That should be a big concern to all of us, leaders of today in a political level and of course at the bureaucracy and at all provincial and local level government. Violence is also a major challenge, children facing our children. Where children are growing up, there is, I believe and we believe, high level of violence against children, child abuse. There's been no perhaps major study yet, but I would, you know, think that if we do the study well, there would be a high level of child abuse of different type taking place. But otherwise, violence is still a major concern. Children are growing up in an environment of domestic or gender-based violence, tribal violence, political violence, economic and other social violence is equally a major concern. And studies have shown that those children who get traumatized by violence and grow up in an environment where violence is normalized, normally becomes perpetrators of violence themselves. And in Papua New Guinea, we are normalizing violence. We are not taking enough steps to stop violence, change people's behavior. That's the environment our children are growing up with. So it should, you know, really concern us. How are these children going to fare in the future? Will they be smart and wise as we pronounce in the 2050 vision or will they be perpetrators of violence, slow in growth in their mental and physical development? Civil registry too is also a big problem in PNG still. Civil registry, birth registry is very low, children are not registered, a lot of them in the length and breadth of our country. Many are growing up not knowing their date of birth and the identity becomes a problem. And in this day and age, identity is very important. Very important to have an ID, very important to have a passport, very important to have driving license, and very important that you know your date of birth. Because if you are, for example, playing rugby and you are over 24, you might not make it to the Chiefs, for example. There's a new franchise that are coming up in 2028, so it might omit some good players who may be over age because they don't know their age. Over and above all this, and these are just some of the challenges facing children and facing our future, next 50 years and beyond. Over and above these, you know, challenges that are identified on behalf of the committee and all of us, unplanned pregnancy, teenage pregnancies equally a major problem in Papua New Guinea. Papa Mama Ya, oh, Papa Luuklo Karim Piginini, nothing. This is a big concern I want to express on behalf of the committee. In the cities, for example, men are making babies as a trophy, as a trophy. The Min Man Ya, Mi Kat Amas Marina Amas Piginini. Unplanned. Why are we bringing children to this life, to this world when we are not prepared for them or we are not have a plan for them or we don't have the means to sustain them? These are the challenges that children are facing. This is what we have been facing in the last 50 years. Prime Minister and government is calling for reset, and this committee is here to get all of us to start seriously thinking about resetting. And resetting starts with the children. And this is why these committees, you know, coming to life is very vital. It's very important that this committee does its work and we have a dialogue between you all at the front line, Department of Health, Community Development, Planning, Treasury, Finance, Education, Police, Community Development, and importantly, the provincial government. At the national level, you all, my Secretary, you and your team will come up with the overarching policy metrics to guide all of us. But the implementation is at the provinces. And we have to have a serious dialogue between national government, national departments and the provincial government. Plenty of time, you may be working competing races here. Are we complementing each other and supporting each other and working towards outcomes or not? This is why the Parliament has put together this committee. On behalf of the committee, I want to say this, that we understand all the dynamics, Secretary and your team. Plenty of time, you may buy talk, not had money. But the important thing is that what plan do we have? What effort have we put in place to change the dynamics, to address the challenges and create the environment conducive for children to grow up in? And importantly, how are we going to achieve the outcomes that are set in the national plan, national health plan? Does it capture children? And how are we migrating those plan to action so that the outcome is achieved between the national department and the provincial governments and agencies like all the provincial health authorities and provincial education board and all the other state agencies that are going down to the province? Like the police is not a responsibility of provincial government. It's a national responsibility, but they work in the provinces and they have to work together with the provincial government to achieve outcomes. So these are the backdrop that I hope gives us some clarity on the work of the committee and the reason why Parliament has set up this committee. We want to focus on the children. The message too is that perhaps in the last 50 years, we have not really shined the spotlight on children. We have not, we have not done as much as we could do on children. We've worked on infrastructure, we've worked on health and education generally, we have worked on building the economy. You may like working money, money, but this money that we are, you know, trying to gain from economic development and all the investment in business, it's supposed to be converted into social gain and in particular, focus on the children, give them a better start so that their life journey can be greater than ours. So ladies and gentlemen, this is the background in which I want to open our inquiry today. I want to conclude my opening remarks by explaining to all of us that what we have done, how we can conduct the inquiry now is that prior to today's opening inquiry, opening session of this inquiry and the work of the committee, we have sent out questionnaires to relevant government departments and provincial governments. So our presumption is that you all have read the questions and have come with a prepared reply. And so we will ask you all to start off by giving our opening remarks or responding to the questions, and then we can have, you know, exchange in terms of our committee asking questions. Thank you very much, everyone. Let's have a great inquiry. Sorry, before we start and I give the floor to Mr Wai and his team, I just want to acknowledge the regional director for UNICEF. She's visiting the country at this time, and she's here, she will be coming, so I'll acknowledge her later. Thank you very much, everyone. Mr Wai, you and your team have the floor.
Thank you, Governor Honorable Pois Parkop, the Chair of the Special Parliamentary Committee on Children and Youth. Thank you and your members, the honourable members of this special and important committee. Governors in peace, thank you. With me is Dr Penrel Boas, is our Acting Deputy Secretary for Public Health. Dr Luti Amos, who is the Executive Manager for Population Health, that includes mothers and children. And then I also, we have Dr Mark Rafal, is the Manager for Population. The executive manager is responsible for health promotion, environmental health, nutrition, all that, so it's like inclusive. So thank you for inviting us. Apologies from Minister because he's physically down a bit because of flu. Thank you, thank you, this special committee for inviting health and our special partners, Vera and Tim from UNICEF and every other partners and the media. Thank you for this special occasion because it is important. We in health are responsible for the entire life cycle of a human being. That's from the womb to the tomb, we call it. When a person is born to this world, we are there to receive, but even before they are born, in the mother's womb, God knows them, but we make sure that womb is clean, the mother is healthy before she goes into pregnancy. And then as the child is growing as a fetus in the womb, we are also responsible to make sure that nine months are healthy. We weigh them, we provide antenatal care, and then make sure that the baby is sitting well for a normal delivery. If not, we have programs to make sure they are referred and they are taken to the hospital for cesarean section or that. So when they are born to the first few hours of life, few days of life, we call them neonates because they are little ones and they are very vulnerable for disease and infection. So we have a program responsible for that. So we have specialists, nurses and specialist doctors responsible to manage them. And then when they are one day old to one year old to five years old, so we have programs to also protect them. So immunization is one of them, and then nutrition is another. And then we have programs for children up to 10 years old, up to teenage, adolescent, and then up to parenthood, and then to old and aging. So we have a full program. So we call it, we're responsible, health is responsible from the womb to the tomb. And then also, having said that, we know that health is wealth. Without you and I being healthy, we can't do anything, we can't develop the community, we can't develop the nation. So we've, many at a time, elders said to be a spender, no, we're not. We raise human beings to be healthy and then we make sure they have a lifespan. So our current lifespan for today, Chair, is 66.5. During independence, it was 55. So with health and well-being, we've raised the population up to 66.5 now. By 2050, we wanted to increase to 75, just like any other countries, or even better, 80. So what are those things that are shortening our lives? We want to, so health is responsible for that. We have a system, and you are right, Chair, the health system department is only responsible for policy, standard setting, monitoring and evaluation, and then technical support, training, and then procurement of medical supplies and distribution. When it comes to service delivery, it's the provincial health authorities. So provincial health authority is responsible for the provincial hospital, the district hospitals, the health centers, the community health post, and then down to aid post. So service delivery is only responsible for provincial health authorities. And the provincial health authorities are an organ of the provincial government. I see two governors here, yourself as well as Governor Mutuval. So I want to report and also advise and inform you that provincial health authority is an organ of the provincial government. When it comes to service delivery, you have every right to demand for reports, every right to inform them and ask them what is happening to my children, what is happening to my immunization coverage, what is happening to my maternal health services, TB, HIV. So I just want to inform you on that. So up to today, we have a lot of challenges when it comes to PHA service delivery, but we know that that's the best system when there is support from the provincial government, from the district administrations, service deliveries into the districts. The districts don't live in the province, I mean, the people don't live in the province. They live in a district, they are from the tribe, they are from the clan, they live in families, in a village setting, and that's where the local MPs come in. So we need every possible support from the national government, from the provincial government, as well as the district administrations, and then the district MPs. Because those are your population that we provide health services to. But every chair, every one time, only 10% of the people get sick. 90% are not sick, they are healthy. And we're concentrating and spending too much time on that 10% and spending 80% of the resources on those who are sick, and we're not looking at those who are healthy. 90% are not healthy.
Are empty.
I mean, 90% are healthy and 10% are sick. So a lot of efforts are given to curative health. So Governor and members, I think for the last 50 years, we've spent too much time on curative health. 50 years on, we must talk about making people healthy, the 80%, the 90% of the people. So our motto going forward is about healthy communities, healthy communities and healthy mindset. So when a person has a healthy mindset, we'll think about eating good food, looking after themselves, looking after the environment. With a healthy environment, because the environment shapes a person. Em kama klino, em was waso, sleep no gupla house, emba was was good now. And then, so all that, so Governor, our aim is now going forward is that we want to focus on a healthy environment and healthy mindset. So we need your support, the Parliamentary Committee's support on make sure we keep the environment clean and healthy, and then make sure the mindset of our people are also healthy so that people seem to be doing the right things, eating the right food, drinking the right water, and not doing the opposite, and then expect the health system to fix up their problems. So I'll stop as part of introduction.
Yes. Thank you, Acting Secretary. I was going to remind you that your time, your department is until 10:30. So we prefer that you focus on the questions that have been directed to you all. So we get specific focus now on the effort towards the children. For example, immunization.
Immunization.
I think in 2024, coverage only about 47%. Some provinces high, some provinces low, and child malnutrition is 44%, age five a stand in PNG. Poor nutrition, high malnutrition affecting physical growth and mental growth. So please focus on the questions so we can zoom in on the work of the committee because that statement you have made is very important, but these are sort of parliamentary committee on health. Here we are focused on the children and youth. For today, we are focused on children. Thank you, Acting Secretary.
All right, thank you, Chair. With those kind of opening remarks, we'll zero down to the little ones, the children. Now, immunization, I have a slide on, so I don't know if, yeah, so talking about immunization, it's extremely important. I mean, one time you can remember, we had a lot of measles around, a lot of whooping cough around, a lot of legkrungut ankrukrut caused by polio. But thanks to immunization, to the scientific world, they were able to make, manufacture immunization and vaccines, and we have people like, good partners like UNICEF who support us to bring in the vaccines. We thank the government previously, the money was about 3.3 million or 4 million, and then this year it was increased to about 18.9 million for vaccines. So we are so thankful for the immunization program in the country. Next slide. We, so these are the, as I said, the little ones, when they are born, we have all these vaccines like BCG, hepatitis B, OPV, injectable poliovirus Pendivite that covers tetanus diphtheria, petyas, hepatitis B, PCV, measles and rubella and tetanus toxin. So those are the vaccines that are being given to our little ones from the ages zero up to five years. And then measles are given at nine years. Uh and then measles are given at nine, nine years as well as mothers are given uh tetanus, to prevent uh um tetanus. Expect you have to uh support me in that. Next, next slide. So. So our immunization um modeling, our 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 ways of giving immunization is at the static clinics or firstly at birth and then at the static clinics. And then um the the nearby villages, we do um um mobile patrols where the cars can go. That's why uh Chair and MPs, we need will um about eighty percent or eighty five percent are covered by food, um mobile patrols. That's where cars are involved. That's where boats are involved, you know. Um and then um about ten percent are hard to reach. And that's where we send out patrolling teams to go out there for vaccination and then we do airlifting. So those are the methods of of distributing or disseminating that service of immunization. Again, eighty five percent of our people, they live in rural areas. Next slide. Next slide. At one time, when I was an officer in charge in the eighties in Marwaka uh and early nineties, we used to walk and our immunization coverages used to be at eighty five percent, ninety percent. And a health center used to have a MCH vehicle. They go out at seven o'clock with the nurses, with the vaccines. They immunize jab jab and then they come back. I need to know if the health centers have one car each or not. Because that's important. Without vehicles, our nurses cannot go out.
Okay, Secretary, Acting Secretary, yeah, very good. But I let's, I want to zoom you straight onto, for example, DPT three. DPT three uh immunization or vaccination.
Yes.
Uh from the statistics that we have, Medeng, for example, is below twenty percent coverage in twenty twenty four. Um most provinces, I think Western Britain, New Ireland, Manos, Bou- Bougainville, Autonomous Region of Bougainville, Oro Central, Simbu, Western Islands, Sela, they are between fifty to eighty nine percent coverage.
Yes.
Um. I think only NCD is um between ninety to a hundred percent
Yes.
Coverage.
Yes.
Um all the other provinces are thirty to forty nine percent.
Yes.
So can you explain this disparity, for example, Medeng? What is the problem in Medeng? And what is your department, working with the PHA in Medeng, doing to improve uh immunization in Medeng? And for that matter, those between fifty to eighty nine percent. Oro Central, what Eastern Britain, New Ireland, Manos, so on. Um and the those between thirty to forty nine percent. Western Britain, Moro Bay, Eastern Islands, Gulf, Western, Southern Islands, Hanga, West Pacific. A lot of provinces are below fifty. Only a few are fifty and above. And on the NCD is ninety and above.
Thank you, Chair. Um well, I provided to you the district profiles. That's the thick one. And then that's the SPA report, Sector Performance Report is the smaller one, and that's the district profiles. Um Chair and the commi- uh committee, our our target for any immunization is ninety five percent. Ninety five. It's like a fence. Once we don't reach that, our children and our little ones are vulnerable. So thirty percent, forty percent is nowhere near. All districts, all provinces. We must achieve ninety or ninety five percent. That's why in the district profiles, we will provide that in a par- um parliament session um so that each MPs will see their own districts. It's broken into districts.
Very good.
So real, the the our target is ninety five percent. And then anything below that is is not good enough. So.
Okay, so Acting Secretary, explain this disparity, why most provinces are below fifty, Medeng is below thirty? And what's, why this is happening and what steps the National Department and the PHA? Are you all working together or they are working on their own or what's happening?
Governor, we are, as I said, um.
Secretary, I respect you addressing me as governor, but now I'm chairman.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Okay, Chair, Chair.
Address me as Chair.
Uh Chair of the Special Committee. Um as I mentioned, Department of Health is responsible when it comes to immunization. With the support of UNICEF, we provide the the cold chain. So almost eighty, eight hundred and how many facilities, which is almost more than eighty five percent, ninety percent have cold chain. Previously, we used to have kerosene fridges, gas fridges. Now we have solar fridges. So thank you to UNICEF. So that's our job to make sure we provide cold chain. Department's responsibility is to provide vaccines. And then we haven't run out of vaccines yet. Thank you to the to the government for doing that. But when it comes to sev- and then we are responsible to fly them out there. And then it's the responsibility of each of the the facilities to deliver vaccines. That's why I said the the displacement facilities are at the delivery ward, at the static clinics and then outreach patrol, uh out mobile uh services. If that is unsuspecting and we need to hear from.
No, you can suspect. You have to know. Uh Secretary, what what you need to tell us is that why have you all done a study to explain, understand why most provinces are below fifty, Medeng province is below thirty? And that's the first thing. And then the second issue is, you're working with them now. How are we going to improve the reach out? So that coverage goes to, as you as said, ninety percent and above.
Ilukosan provinces, Chair, provinces are not conducting the clinics, so.
No, we don't want to, no, Secretary, you shouldn't say ilukosan. You know or not. That's what we want to know.
According to the SPA report, many provinces and facilities are not conducting the outreach clinics. So there was some visits being done by Dr. Amos and then let her explain. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Amos.
Thank you. I'll um talk on Medeng province.
Yes.
One of the most important factors that contributes to whether a immunization coverage is good is the leadership. Leadership at the provincial level and leadership not only at the province, but leadership at the district and right down to community level. They must.
Connection from the province, provincial head, right down. Are you communicating with everybody downline? And then do you have the leadership? So governor, the next time you see Medeng, Medeng has really improved now. We have CNSB project there. We've now linked with the Danny Allo, he is the uh the.
PA.
Provincial administrator. Provincial administrator. So we've we've now, you know, like gone down to try and help them. So uh this at the secretary's level is like his height there, but we are the ones who are doing the work at at that level. So we do advise, we do follow up and we ask, why is immunization coverage so low? What is happening? Or why didn't you use this? Even even the vaccines, we monitor the vaccines at at level three. We can see that you're not ordering. So we ask, why aren't you ordering? What is happening with you? And then one of the major import uh factors that contributes to this, like I did a deep dive in Moro Bay province. They could not do outreach. They couldn't go out. Like, for example, Mutzing has one vehicle. And then so that vehicle is there parked in the facility, it cannot go out. So one of the major contributing factor to uh coverage so low is most of your population are living in the in the communities. So we are working on that. Um at this point in time, uh my program is developing an outreach guideline to support the provinces. So we've identified issues, we are addressing them and uh we hope that uh once we roll those roll those out and then actually we've also asked minister to come on board and talk directly to the CEO. Like at my level, I can't talk to the CEO. I ask the minister to talk to the CEO. I can talk to the director of public health and then the the downliners. So we've now done that. We are communicating with them and then showing them that they're not doing well. So what is what's happening? And then hold them accountable for these figures.
Uh so Dr. Amos, in terms of the the leadership issue, uh what steps are the department or doing to generate leadership support? In all the provinces, but more particularly those below fifty. Medeng, you have mentioned now, so it's good they are coming on board. They will be coming before inquiry hopefully tomorrow.
Yes.
So they can, you know, enlighten us on what happened in the past and how the progress that made. In terms of just on leadership, is there awareness or attempt by department or provincial government or PHA to mobilize leaders to come together to support the immunization program rollout campaign?
Yes, we do. Yeah. And then the other thing is with the leadership, in Medeng particularly, we've now changed leadership. And leadership is not just leadership i- in the facility. It's if you are the governor, you have issues as governor. If you are the member of parliament, so leadership at all levels. So that really affects the province as well and its performance. Because we said already, the PHA is a provincial business. It belongs to the province and it are are the provincial members supporting their PHAs. So we also have a course um where we are actually training our CEOs in leadership. And um and also some of the criterias that are used to select them are that you've you've got some leadership training before in order to be able to come on board as the leader.
Is there a national sort of a comprehensive immunization strategy? That the department has developed and then you all are sharing it with all the PHA. So it's like a toolkit. There's a toolkit, huh? Okay.
It expires this year.
National immunization policy as well as the national immunization strategy.
Yeah.
Uh but just to, Chair, to um for the for the leadership. Um before the end of the year and early next year, we want to start with Medeng. Like spend, go and spend about two days or three days with them and then identify their problems and then we find solutions for them. Uh Moro Bay, it's a huge province. And then those who are trailing, we want to go and sit down with them and then find out exactly what is wrong and why they are trailing. So we'd want to, we'd want to go down with and sit down with them. So that's, in fact, in the last National Airplane Review, there there was a challenge, a missing gap, and that's the linkage between the national department and the provinces. We're developing policies and we expect them to implement, but we don't go down and supervise. That's why um starting early next year, we'd want to go and sit down with them. Uh Medeng, we've the CEO has been changed. So we have a new one, Dr. Clement Diamond is the new CEO. I was with them last week when I went to Divine Wood University. They have a good team there, but it's to go down province by province, sit with them. Some provinces are doing very well. Others are still dragging on. So we want to go and sit down with them and then talk with the health leadership as well as provincial administration. If we can have a courtesy, we can always call into the provincial government too. Thank you.
Uh Secretary, I think, let me pause a question here. I think in your opening remarks, you mentioned something about uh PHAs being an organ of the provincial government. They are more responsible to the provincial government in its provinces than the the National Department of Health. But I understand rolling out immunization program is a, is the function of the National Department of Health. But the implementation part of it is taken by each respective uh PHAs in the provinces. The data that's coming out, for example, uh Medeng is very low, immunization up to about twenty percent. Like in my province in Chimbo, which I think it's up to about eighty five. Yeah, we have yet to reach the ninety five percent threshold that you mentioned. So it it probably may have to do with the National Department of Health not coordinating properly with the PHAs in each respective provinces. Because as a politician, I had difficulty working with the PHA. Because the CEO is appointed by the minister, so is the members of the provincial health authorities. Although they are supposed to be reporting to the provincial governments. So you you see where the alliance is. They are more aligned to who their bosses is. Sorry? Well, yeah, so that's what the problem is. And uh some PHAs, CEOs of PHAs, they don't even uh work very closely with the governors of the provinces. So when you're talking about breakdown in leadership, that's where the problem is. And the idea of setting out PHAs, no, but it's good. You delegate the health functions back to the provinces, but it's as to how each respective provinces manage the health in their respective provinces. And that probably accounts for the, not just in immunization, in other aspects of health, the role of an administration as well. So maybe that's something that the, maybe the government and maybe through the Department of Health, through the minister, can look at it. But unlike before, prior to the provincial health authority coming into existence, the system was functioning well. Everything was coordinated from the National Department to the provinces. We have the provincial divisions of health that they're not reporting to the provincial government. They're working as national public servants under the Department of Health and the system was functioning. So if there's breakdown in the system, we're talking here about immunization of children, but the other, you know, health is a very big area. And the other systems in the health department that's breaking down, then that probably to account for the. So it's maybe it's a question that's coming back to us as members of parliament and leaders who are involved in passing the act and getting PHA in place. There may be, you know, there's good side to it and there also bad side to it. So these are things that maybe in in the course of the inquiry and in the findings, we can, there's something we can address. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Uh Secretary, since now we are talking about, you mentioned that you you sent the vaccines down. And now we are, we are identifying an issue that there is a leadership issue uh in delivering those vaccines. And my question is, you mentioned about you've been in Marwaka, you've been working there some time ago and.
Eighty nine.
In eighty nine and it it usually be about eighty five to ninety percent or ninety five percent coverage vaccines in. So what has went wrong from that experience that you have from Marwaka and now currently we are seeing that vaccines are dropping? So now you are in the, you are secretary now. So what has been, went wrong from there to now? So can you give us those insights as to why, what has really went wrong from there? So we are looking for that answer. What's the, what's the issue? What's the issue that has went wrong and that now we're having a low coverage of immunization? So can you give us the insight now? So that's where the solution, you will find the solution. Thank you.
What went before and what is wrong now?
Thank you. Thank you to members of the panel. Um immunization is not a national, it's not a national health department program. It is a program for the children and it's delegated right down even to the to the district level through the provincial health authorities. Provincial health authority is a, is a centralized function within that province. It's not to the department. Um that's why I said provincial health authority, Ethan Hogan of the different, one, um govern- chairman works very well with this provincial health authority. Uh Governor Mutuvel, remember, he also works, he has some problems, but he also works with with this. So it depends entirely on the board chair, board chair and the board members. Uh governor endoses them through PEC. Other members don't, it's not appointed by minister. On agreement, they are endorsed by the PEC and then the governor sends them, sends to minister and then he, so it is a, it is.
Secretary, uh do you, do you know they have the overall power as the health secretary of all the health issues? Any health issue in the country comes under the health department's responsibility. So you are telling the committee that this. So you are telling the committee that this inquiry, that you don't have the power to over those issues that happens in the district and in the provinces. Is that right?
We coordinate, we coordinate the overall health system. But when it comes to service delivery, each of the provinces are given those powers of service delivery, including human resources, including the facilities, including the, uh, finances are delegated to each of the provinces. So like, uh, for, for you, the, the Moro Bay Provincial Health Authority has a responsibility to deliver services all the way even to Minema District, Wobulolo, the Macabre and that. So, um, we, we are responsible only to monitor and then to supervise. But when it comes to service delivery, it is the responsibility of the PHAs with the support of the districts and the provincial government to deliver services.
And Secretary, if you monitor, then if they don't deliver, then do you follow up on those, why you are not delivering those things? Or do you do that job?
Yes, we do. And then we provide the, the spa reports and tell them where you, um, so like starting this year now, we are, we are starting to do like, uh, monthly and weekly virtual meetings with the CEOs. So we will continue to do that and then we will continue to, uh, uh, once a year or twice a year, we'll have, we will begin to go into the provinces, sit down with them and tell them, why is this district dragging on? So we need to work together. Thank you.
Yeah. Before, before a member for Wawari asked a question, I just wanted to remind us that, uh, there's also a question on the, um, nutrition. So your time
And the V H A.
Is, uh, until ten thirty. Secretary for Community Development and his team, I know. So try to balance, uh, your, uh, Secretary, try to be precise. Very good general, uh, you know, comments. Focus on the immunization. Uh, there's a question earlier on by, uh, member for, uh, Karun Sutambanet, I think it's about the PHA. It's PHA means very much. So I was going to tell you, you talk about, it's the, the task of our committee to the task of our committee, my apologies for not recording. Task of our committee to report to parliament on the problems that you all might be facing in rolling out, you know, this particular specific matter, huh? So is, uh, the PHA an impediment, uh, to immunization? Uh, to other health issue? That's another question, but immunization. Um, I think member for Minemi ask a specific question too, that you have not answered. Before time, you stop long when I'm up there. Marowaka, it was about eighty, uh, something percent. Why it worked well in eighty-nine? Now you're secretary and it's going down. So what worked well before? What is not working now? So you make an understanding too. We all can sort this out together, huh? Member for, uh, Wawari is going to ask another question.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Secretary and the team. Okay, my, my, uh, your first statement, you mentioned about you are responsible for the womb to tomb. To womb to tomb. So I think that's, uh, and you list out the programs, uh, in those areas and those, uh, those, uh, it sounds really nice and, uh, like in theory. Uh, but in practicality, practically it's not happening and I'm, I'm from a district where this, whatever you mention, I wish that it's happening in my district, but it's, it's not happening and I'm really, I'm sitting here and listening to you and I'm really, uh, really amazed with your, with the concept. You have a very good program, but it's not working at the at the district and L G and ward level. It's not happening there, so I would, uh, I'm, I'm trying to understand why it's not working. So we have different level of structure. You have the health and all this, uh, under the health, you have the PHA, PHA, then you have the facilities, health facilities level. Four, three, two, one and all this. Okay, that's, that's in terms of health, but in, uh, in terms of, uh, political and, uh, I mean, structure, we have the national government, provincial government. Uh, then you have the local level government and that word, and then D A is just hanging somewhere. So I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to see where, where we can, uh, how can we, how can, where the responsibility is for, you, you also develop standards too. As a department of health, you also develop standards. So you mentioned that Mu Jing does not have a vehicle.
No, still one.
Uh, am I saying Mu Jing or?
Mu Jing got one.
One, but, uh, lack of, lack of more vehicle to, you know, spread out. So this should be, it's a standard issue. So when we, when we have a health center, how many vehicles should we have? What level of, uh, you know, all this, all this are. So do we have, do we have some sort of standards for its facilities and determination for it's like, what should a ward counselor do? What should a local president do? And the standard, what should a D D A do? And provincial, do we have some sort of things that we know that we have failed in our responsibilities? In, in delivering those, uh, things, uh, you know, the determination for its facilities from ward level to L G to D D A to provincial government, huh? So now you're looking more health facilities, is there a way we can, you know, connect the responsibilities and connect the standards and all this so that we can know, uh, where we will be coming? So, you know, you have, uh, malnutrition, you have nutrition issue, you have, uh, no immunization, all, all these, all these programs that we want to fulfill, huh? So what will a ward counselor do? What is expected of a ward counselor? What is expected of a L G president? What is expected of a D D M P I, I mean, member of parliament or a governor? Because we look after different structures, uh, structures and we look after funding also. So what would be our responsibility to which facilities and all this? Is there some sort of extended operating processes or, you know, some sort of service level agreement, you know, between those areas that we can, so that we can get this nice, you know, from womb to tomb, the programs between that working at the ward level, uh, D D A and electoral level? My secretary.
Thank you. Before we go to nutrition, uh, these are important questions. Um, health is not an island. Health, I'm sorry, depend on all other. Uh, health, we need roads. Health, we need vehicles. Um, for the, like, when I was in Marowaka, uh, in Simbari and Underkombi, I had young people. So I was also young. So we used to, uh, go out, scale the mountains and you know the mountains. At the moment, sometimes they're recruitment. So the young people are not there. So to scale up the mountains, our whole people, some of those from Underkombi and, uh, Marowaka, they've retired and they came and saw me. So those are the, so aging is one thing. Accessibility is another thing. Transport is another thing. So these are all the social determinants of health. Uh, we do have standards, member. We, we do have standards from level one, level two by all making one, one, a car, by staff, walk man, everything is there. So aging is one, then going to, uh, uh, question for sort of money. PHA is a beautiful, it's a, it's a good pro, policy. And then, but sometimes it is the people. We need to review it so that, um, make sure they are performing. We haven't centralized, um, health services to department of health. We have a responsibility, provincial government has a responsibility to support health. Um, district health services or district, D D As have a responsibility to support health. So we haven't centralized. It's the mechanism of how we supervise and how it is supported at the implementation level. Uh, thank you. And then we have to go into the nutrition part before we
Uh, before we go to, Dr. Emos, you want to talk about nutrition or continue with the immunization?
No, I can talk about the connectivity from the province right down to the district and it links immunization and it links to Medeng.
Yes, maybe you can talk about that. I want to give, uh, before we go to nutrition, uh, I want to give, uh, opportunity to, uh, governor, a committee member, Governor Mutival to just, uh, because he's here as committee member, but he can also give a bit of summary of the Western Britain experience. I think in future, we will have his team to come before the inquiry too, but he's here now, he can give us a experience of, uh, give us an oversight of what are the difficulties his province face. Uh, so it can be part of the dialogue we are having and our recommendation too. Yes, Dr. Emos, yes.
In terms of, uh, the, the challenge here with the PHA is the connectivity from the CEO right down to the ward level. Now, we have a new policy, the V H A policy, which we will not have time to discuss. It's going to come through, slosh and come to N E C, approve it. So that we will get ward people to be down there, working barefoot and hands at the village level. And then like in Medeng with the C N S B project, we are going to have a national nutrition summit. You can come and hear all about what we are doing in Medeng province. You will be surprised with Medeng province, the immunization coverage has really improved. And it's all due, due to the V H A and how we are linking the provincial leader with the district. You have a district health manager. You have a provincial, a district, um, district level. We have a district coordination committee where the local MP sits and we also encourage that and, uh, right down to the ward level. So in this, uh, C N S B project, we've got C N S B project in, C N S B is a nutrition project in western province, in Medeng, in Simbo, East New Britain. So you, you look out for these four provinces. If they come on board, you can ask them about the project and what's happening. They'll share with you their story. The linkage, the leadership, not only at the PHA level, but at the provincial, um, at the provincial, uh, what's it, provincial level leadership is very important. These two must be talking. If these two are talking, the district people are talking, the ward people are talking, service embargo. Needs by you meeting, you wouldn't have any issue.
All right, Doctor, can you just comment, there's a question there on the, since you mentioned the village health assistant policy. Can you just address the question or maybe, uh, acting secretary, why we'd address it, but, um, there's a question, what is the current status and expected timeline for N E C's approval of the village health, uh, assistant policy? And what timeline is foreseen for its operationalization at provincial and district level? Because you just mentioned that it's critical to immunization and of course a lot of other health outcomes as well, but it's taking time. What's the delay? Why isn't this policy approved by N E C now?
Sure, we, we took the policy, uh, to as far as C E C.
Yes.
Um, there was, um, a mention of forty-five million to pay and then, um, we did, um, inform the C E C, uh, that, um, the money will not come only from, from the PHAs. It can be paid by the D D As. Uh, it's only two hundred kina a fortnight. So that, in each village, there is a health ambassador. So, uh, we
We H A.
Village health assistant.
Village health assistant.
But none of them shoot, but will become like a health ambassador in each of the village. So, um, we're going to go back again like next week, um, minister will, will send, send the, um, we are resubmitting.
Two hundred kina per fortnight.
Two hundred kina per fortnight.
They pay fortnight, they will twice a day.
And then, uh, so they're the ones who will go out to help promotion, check how many mothers are there, report to the, uh, O I C of the health facility. So, uh, Governor, we're going to go back again and then, uh, hopefully by end of this year, it should be approved. So it's two hundred kina, uh, per fortnight. And one kind of, um, village court magistrate and
Right, and this is, uh, one of the decisive factor in Medeng, huh, Dr. Emos?
Yes, with the V H A, um, because the health board has approved and then the C, with the C N S B project, we decided to pilot it, how would it look? How, you know, like
Sorry, where, where you say health board? Which level of health board? The provincial or?
National health board. So from the national health board, our policies go there and if it's approved, then it goes through. It does the process, it comes through slosh.
And so who is going to fund this, um, two hundred kina fortnight for all this V H A? Is it provincial health authority or provincial government or National Department of Health or? Is that still being worked out, huh?
Yes.
Well, it's a, it's a policy we, which, uh, mentioned at about, uh, forty-five million. But when it comes to implementation, implementation and payment, it can be done by the provincial government, it can be done by the D D As. Or L L Gs. So it's two hundred kina per, and then it depends on the number of villages you have and how many, uh, uh, villages that you want to have.
All right, Secretary and your team, before we go to nutrition, I want to give an opportunity to, um, uh, committee member, Governor Motival, to just give us a bit of insight. How his province is, uh, is rated between, um, thirty to forty-nine percent. So it's, uh, one of the provinces that need more reach out. It's, it has its own dynamics geographically and everything, but there might be something that you can enlighten us on it. Uh, but before he speaks, I want to, um, acknowledge, uh, member for, most be not worse, our committee member, Honorable Oya Boyesom, welcome to our inquiry. Governor, you can speak both as a committee and as, as a governor too. Just to be, what is the problem with your, uh, province?
I can
Yeah. Is it the PHA or is it no V H A or is it no good money or? Uh, maybe you are not showing leadership. Uh, we are putting you on the spot.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman, uh, and the, the committee members. Thank you, Mr. Kane, Acting Secretary and also your team. Uh, as Chairman mentioned, let me quickly clarify about the role of PHA because I was part of, uh, those team. I was like number fifth or sixth to sign that PHA around during my first term between two thousand twelve to two thousand fifteen, around that time we signed. Of course, we signed it with a very high hope that, uh, I, I, I'm, I'm so glad to hear the word that, uh, PHA is, uh, is, is, it's a integral organ of a provincial government, but it's not treated that way, you know, from the inception. And of course, I thank the Department of Health to bring amendments to allow the provincial administrator to be the, uh, deputy chair for the PHA ex-officio. Uh, to give some insight for the provincial government as to what is happening and all those things. Of course, uh, Chairman, the PHA board is extremely powerful. They are extremely powerful. They don't have to consult, uh, governor or minister. They have, uh, the powers to make decision. In fact, one of the questions asked by one of our member that who appoints the CEO? The CEO is appointed by PHA board, not by the governor, not by anyone. Right now, we also face serious challenges because our current CEO has reached compulsory retirement age. And in fact, there are three hundred fifty-three positions has been, you know, um, approved. Approved positions has been recruited or given contract, but unfortunately that cannot be executed. The Department of Public Service simply says that, uh, since you have not addressed the issue of, uh, the current CEO, because we are asked to do a acting appointment. There again, you depend on PHA and they decide on what time, when and how. In fact, they didn't even tell me who actually, you know, they considered. They just simply said, they made a decision, they gave it to, uh, the N D O H representative, uh, Margaret to go and do the gas settle and all. But the challenge is, the process are quite stringent and extremely slow. And the PHA board carries extraordinary power. In the provinces where, you know, if they are not working with the provincial government or members, then it is not going to perform. So th- that is one of the, uh, big challenge. Again, we are under, they're messy in, in terms of, you know, calling for the board meeting and addressing the real issue of like, you know, doing this acting appointment. Uh, as much as we like to think that, you know, it's, uh, they really talk to governor or brief governor every month, it's, it's not happening. That's not the reality. Of course, there is a new board. Because the farmer board knowingly, knowingly, even after receiving the advice from the Department of Personal Management, went ahead and deliberately, you know, issued a contract for the third time for someone who is already above sixty-five. Because the law is quite strict, because anyone above sixty-five cannot stay in public office. Uh, that's what the state solicitor is saying. So that, that's one, uh, challenge. As much as we think that the PHA board works with you, but they make a decision which we become, uh, the, we, we are blamed for things are not happening and all those things. And those three hundred fifty-three position are jeopardy. The Public Service Secretary is saying, sorry, you have to change, do the acting appointment and then come back with a new submission. So that means all of them are not getting a proper fortnight where, you know, it, uh, what it was meant for. Like they are, they are just getting some kind of casual wages or something, but not the real one. Uh, Secretary, many times, as much as we like to think like, you know, uh, PHA means it's, uh, it's because my experience from the beginning, now of course it's changed, we are, we are, you know, really pushing hard. We are deliberately going in and interfering. The, the PHA chairman says, oh, Governor, why are you putting pressure on us to do this acting appointment? Let, let me do my fiduciary duty and all those things. I said, you know, crap, your fiduciary duty is dragging. I said, you know, crap, your fiduciary duty is dragging and delaying, you know, everything and the people are suffering. And the three hundred fifty-three positions are suffering, so you guys have to make a decision. Finally made a decision and it was given to Margaret to go and do the gas settle and whatnot and we are still waiting. As much as when the PHA was initially, you know, established, their main focus was always on the provincial centers or district centers, wherever it's connected, you know, they are focused. Most of, almost ninety percent, ninety percent of the rural health facilities were abundant, not like really. And I, I, because being a governor, I had the previous experience also as we used to have someone called the, like, uh, provincial health advisor. And now they are called, of course, that position, that entire thing been abolished and after PHA established. And during that time, I see we able to even pay for helicopter and bringing some patient from Pililo Island or, you know, Maklo Island or wherever in a remote place from Kendrian. We were easily able to attend to all these things and, you know, the patients or the mothers having some pregnancy complications, they were brought in, you know, to get treatment. But I, I, I doubt whether it is the same case or not because now, all the time, chairman, you rightly asked whether, uh, whether or not PHA received, you know, full funding to compare to the provincial government to some extent. Yes, they do receive, but the funding was not like really, you know, uh, released on time. Even now, I, I doubt whether they have received, now we are in October. I doubt whether they have received even fifty percent of the total appropriation for PHAs. And, and I'm sure it is also applicable to your department. And for provincial government, yes, I can vouch, we received less than thirty percent, you know, for the whole year, two thousand, uh, twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five, you know, appropriation. So we have to force PHA to come out of their comfort zone from the towns and district capitals and to go to the rural areas like L L Gs. Because that is when the, that is when we can proudly say that PHA is working and the province is looked after. Because that is the whole concerns of the members. And another thing is like, I mean, why do we have to depend on members of parliament and everything? You know, if you are putting D S I P, P S I P, two million kina, you, you could even remove as well that money rather than, you know, uh, just because everyone wants, because we do not know, right? I, I give you an example, like in the recent, uh, recent immunization campaign, chairman, you are saying thirty percent, forty percent, but recently ours was the highest, eighty-four percent coverage in the last M N T E campaign. That's, uh, I just checked, checked J B T, what is M N T? It's maternal and neonatal tetanus elimination campaign is organized by N D O H and W H O and UNICEF. This is to reduce the deaths of, uh, mothers and newborn babies. It's mainly caused by tetanus infection during childbirth. And one health worker just came to governor's office. She happened to be the daughter of one of the former president of Bali Vito Island. And she said, oh, uh, you know, governor, I just need, uh, vehicle hire for three days and then I need just like six drums of diesel. I said, for what? They're doing some immunization. Of course, this is not my role of responsibility, you know, to really monitor this kind of program where they, they have a responsible authorities. But again, I just used the discretionary fund and told the staffs, just buy six drums of diesel and three days of hire we give. And that is what giving you this eighty-four percent coverage. Sometimes it is not a really big thing. All they need is some fuel, some food items, you know, to go to remote areas, that makes a big difference. But that happens only when, if that health worker make that initiative to approach, they might also feel reluctant, what is the protocol or the CEO might fire them. You say, why did you go directly, you know, see governors or, you know, members or anyone? So th- these are some areas where we need to empower the provincial health in the sense like they do not have to just allow these six drums of diesel, you know. If, if that can increase the immunization coverage, you know, in that particular, there, I mean, in that report, it says that was the highest during that M N T campaign. I'm not sure, Veera should know. Uh, but, but, but these are the smaller things which we need to address. And, and again, like, uh, you know, some vital, you know, immunization and all those things. Of course, you know, going through UNICEF or gives us, uh, added advantage of, you know, I'm not sure whether we are funding it or we are depending on donor agencies. But you know, fifty years on, I'm not sure why are we still depending on even to just buy some immunization, you know, which is the basic need for any child. If that, that sometimes I hear the amount is like, uh, some like twenty, twenty-five million kina. We are talking about twenty-five billion kina budget, but yet we are really struggling to, you know, uh, uh, give that smaller amount like twenty-five million kina and all for this immunization. So, sir chairman, I'll just conclude, the PHA will wo- work when the, the board of members are really committed. You know, as much as we can appoint, because it's, it's a, it's a big task, it's a job, like it takes a lot of your time and energy and all those things. If they are not really contributing or really, you know, willing to come and commit their time and energy, uh, otherwise it's not going to work, but I'm not sure what kind of, uh, remunerations. I'm, I'm, I'm sure we are giving some kind of sitting allowances or something which we give. But in generally, like we are appointing persons who wouldn't really need for some allowance. Like for example, uh, we want some representative from New Britain Palm Isle CEO, Haagie Isle Palm CEO. You know, we put those kind of people or their representative in the board. So it's mostly, uh, with private people and also some, uh, government people like, you know, representative of a district, representative of, uh, you know, provincial government and all those things. So I think this is where the, it's a lot of communication gap also between like a bigger provinces like Moro Bay, uh, Eastern Highlands and all those things because the province is too big. So they, they find it even difficult to understand the role of, uh, PHA and all those things. So the wider communication is important. I'm thankful that minister recently came and he insisted the point that PHA must report to governors also. Because otherwise we wouldn't know what is really happening. But one thing, chairman, they are very good at preparing, you know, big thick reports which you cannot read and digest. That's a big problem.
I have to, uh, stop you there.
Thank you, chairman.
Uh, thank you, committee member and, uh, and, uh, governor, who I just giving you an opportunity to give us a perspective on West New Britain, how I think, in this case, we are talking about the, the vaccine for D B, D P P three. Uh, maybe on the other vaccine, you are doing well, but on this vaccine, you are not doing well. So it might be the PHA or it might be you and your L L G presidents are doing too much politics and not thinking about, you know, the real things that need to be done. So anyway, your, your, um, provincial government will have a opportunity to come before the committee and explain to, but, uh, just to give us a perspective with this time. I think, uh, before we go to the nutrition, I just want to say this, uh, on behalf of all of us, uh, especially me and, uh, and, uh, governor of West New Britain, we are governors, so we should have oversight over PHA. But, uh, secretary, the fact is this, that, uh, at the national and sub-national level, one of our main deliver, deliverables is health. But with the PHA, you know, the, we've created a, uh, separate authority where we provincial government, we are not directly responsible for them, their policy, their priority, how they do their budget, how they roll it out. Uh, so then we become, we have to be accountable to our people, but we are not directly in charge of the, uh, PHA. So this is a dimension, I think, member for Carbusol, the money is giving us the dimension. Of course, there is another committee, parliamentary committee that is responsible for health, but we are just raising it now. I can, I'm raising it too because I have, um, intention to amend the PHA Act so that we get rid of the board. The P E, P E C, or you know, in my case, in the city, uh, or N C D C board should be the board of the PHA. The CEO should be answerable to us because how are we going to deliver health in our provinces? And be accountable to the people of our country or our constituents. So these are some of the dynamics, maybe you all can, uh, raise it too. And if, if leadership is a problem with, uh, rolling out of immunization, it might be part of it is that there is no good dialogue between the PHA board and the provincial leadership. You can see in West New Britain, it's a problem. So maybe in Medeng, it has been a problem, but, but you all are working out to overcome it. So let's think about that, uh, generally and specifically for immunization. Uh, secretary, we'll get, uh, Dr. Imos to talk about, uh, nutrition, a very important area in which equally for children. Um, as I mentioned, stunning, my nutrition is high, stunning is high. Uh, a lot of children are not getting good, uh, nutrition, going to school without proper nutrition. And to, for them to, um, properly, um, you know, learn, uh, get all the, you know, all that is, uh, um, taught to them at the school i- is a problem. Because, uh, poor nutrition and studies too shows that, um, you know, uh, poor nutrition also contribute to poor physical growth. Oh, probably, maybe you mean, uh, you know, our grandparents, they are almost giants, but now we have big meals running around, so.
Coca-Cola and a lamb club.
And now, so, uh, it's a problem in the city, I can say too, that, uh, for example, you, you just go to What Street Primary School. And we are not doing much about it and I, you know, in the city, I can't complain now. We have been trying to work on transferring N C D education from the National Department of, uh, uh, Education to N C D C. But it's taking too long. So it's a problem that I, I face and I'm trying to rectify it. But, uh, Dr. Imos, can you speak on, uh, the specific question on, uh, nutrition?
There are two specific questions on nutrition, one is on the national nutrition survey. The other is, like, you can say stunning, but how did you measure? What did you do to arrive at that figure? So that, um, the national nutrition survey was done some ten years ago. We are planning to, uh, we've done a proposal to the national planning and we've got some money committed from the CNSP project. So we'll be doing a national nutrition survey and then we will respond to that question, whether we are still there or have we improved. Um, and also at the same time, we are piloting, uh, the CNSP project, which addresses nutrition in four provinces. I've already mentioned them and then we will get the findings from those so that we can, uh, replicate that in other provinces as well. Um, so for, in terms of nutrition, previously when I was a medical student, we had a nutrition kitchen in the ward and there was a nurse doing nutrition and we, we would go and steal the milk and drink the milk. It no longer happens. So it now goes back to, you know, like programs in the provinces. Are, are, are they really seeing that nutrition is an issue? And I think, um, we did a study in Moro Bay and, uh, this was a smart survey, but it's not what we are going to be using. So when, after we do the national nutrition survey, we can come back and then talk about it. But I'd like to invite you to come to the national nutrition summit. And then you'll hear about the nutrition, uh, what the programs are doing, what the project is doing in those sites. And then you can, um, learn from that. And then within, in nutrition, we are linking with agriculture, nutrition is cross-cutting. It's not just health business, it's how you garden, how you cook. And then, uh, in terms of children, are they eating properly, what's happening, are they selling good food? So all those things really do matter. So it's a cross-cutting, um, program and it sits with national planning. We do implementation and it's like cross-cutting everywhere, but, uh, we'll let you know as soon as we do the survey.
All right, Dr. Imos, thank you, uh, uh, acting secretary, Mr. Kenway and your team, Dr. Penaus and, uh, Dr.
Macrofile.
Yeah, Dr. Raffaels, thank you, uh, you, you, we have exceeded your time, it's now, uh, four, uh, sorry, ten forty-four. And secretary, uh, community development is here and so I tried to stick to our time. What I want to, uh, ask you all is that, uh, if you can, uh, within the, you know, as soon as possible, um, answer those specific questions and give us a written submission so that it can form part of our recommendation and report to parliament. Uh, we will, of course, have subsequent, uh, inquiries that we will follow up, follow upon. And as you all, uh, can gauge from us, we, uh, focus on the children, uh, immunization and of course, uh, nutrition. Uh, my nutrition is a big concern to us and of course, this, uh, problem is stunning. Um, there's some studies seems to show stunning is happening. So we, we want to get to the bottom of it and find out how we can tend this around. So I, I thank you on behalf of the committee for your appearance this morning and, uh, thank you for the collaboration and, uh, answering the question. Uh, please, uh, uh, submit to us a written report as soon as possible. So we help you all and we all help all of us to, you know, reach out to our children. Thank you, you, you ask us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, secretary, community development, before I ask you all to, uh, please come and take a seat. Secretary, uh, uh, community development, uh, you all come to the bench in front. Uh, before we start with community development, I want to take this time to acknowledge, uh, the regional director, Ms. June Kunungi.
June, June.
Yes, oh, she is, uh, yes, she is here, uh, on, uh, on a visit. So I want to acknowledge, uh, Ms. Kunungi, thank you for taking time to visit, uh, your team here in PNG and also, uh, with the UNICEF team, uh, collectively helping us here in PNG and of course, from the regional office in Benko. Thank you, yes, thank you. All right, uh, let me also acknowledge, uh, our governor from Simbu. Uh, thank you for taking time to come. I think, uh, you all will have, uh, your time tomorrow, but, uh, thank you for coming into. Good to come and, uh, be given a context of the work of the committee. It's a first time committee is having this meeting, so, uh, inquiry, so. You will power mama now and you must have the sunset time here. Next fifty years and we'll begin it, so we are resetting for fifty years now, so it's timely that we have this, uh, dialogue and conversation. Thank you, governor. Uh, Mr. Obasi, please come and take the stand. Introduce your team and then we'll get to, uh, the, uh, dialogue. I think, uh, I presume you all have, um, received the question already. So if you have a statement to make in response to the question, you can give a statement and then, uh, we can have the dialogue, conversation or question. Thank you, Secretary Obasi.
Thank you, thank you, chair. And, uh, chair, I want to acknowledge, uh, the parliamentary committee, I respect the members, all the leaders who are here today. Thank you, chair. Uh, firstly, I want to apologize on behalf of minister. Minister is our on duty travel with the deputy prime minister in China for the Women's Leaders International meeting. Thank you, chair. May I take this time? Okay. Thank you, chair. All right, uh, chair, uh, may I take this time? Uh, firstly to thank the parliamentary committee for making this time available and the opportunity for me to present to you on the status of National Officer Child and Family Services particularly with a question relating to the operation from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. This also gives me the opportunity to highlight and bring to you the, bring to your attention some of the challenges, weaknesses we face. Furthermore, it also gives me the insight into the long-term and short-term plans that the office has as outlined in the implementation. And what we as a whole as a government can achieve with efforts that will require to support our mandate. So, sir, uh, chairman, um, from the department, uh, the Office of Child and Family Services detached from the department in twenty, twenty twenty. So from twenty twenty till now, it's about five years. And the office is standalone with fully functional mandate in terms of budgetary support from the national government as well as the capacity in terms of position, sixty position being created. Uh, chair, having said that, um, we have, uh, in the office, we have now, uh, NEC has appointed the new CEO, uh, Mr. Jerry Waab was sitting, um, on my right. Um, so the appointment has been done, uh, the formality is yet, uh, that yes, had to be undertaken, uh, by the process. However, sir, through the, uh, process, both Department for Community Development and Office of Child- and Office of Child and Family Services has set down together. The seven questions that was required to ask us by the committee, we have answered all the questions. I will now give that opportunity to the new director, uh, Mr. Jerry Wap, to now take us through the questions that you've asked for. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Secretary, uh, Director, congratulations and, uh, welcome. Please, you have the floor now.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Honorable, uh, Vice-Bankman and a member of the, uh, Special Permanent Parliamentary Committee on, uh, Child Wellbeing and Youth. Uh, I'm privileged to be here. Uh, I want to first, uh, uh, thank you for, uh, recognizing the importance of child protection and child well-being in the country. Um, uh, Chair, the, the first, uh, question is on, uh, what is the minister's plan to reactivate, uh, Con, uh, Council, Child and Family Services Council in the country? Uh, Chair, I joined Office of Child and Family Services when, uh, uh, council was inactive. Uh, 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 and I've, uh, already started, I've met with the minister, I briefed the minister on this. And we had a first meeting this year and we have agreed to, uh, have the next two meetings before the end of the year. Then, uh, we are also looking forward to roll it out to the rest of the country. Uh, uh, Ch- Child and Family Services Council is the service delivery framework for child protection in the country. Uh, child protection function is through the Lugatim Pignini Act, which was, uh, passed by Parliament in two thousand fifteen. Uh, the law has a service, uh, delivery framework. Uh, the National Child and Family Services Council is the, uh, the highest authority. Then, uh, that similar functions roll out to, uh, the provinces and then to district committee. Uh, Chair, I want to report to the Special Parliamentary Committee that we need to, uh, my office need to, uh, roll out the provincial council and the district committees. And we, under my leadership and, uh, with the support of Secretary Obasi, who is also the Chair of the National Council and the Minister, we have already had the first meeting. And I'm looking forward to, uh, um, have the other meeting. In fact, the, uh, committee has no complete membership. So we did, uh, review of the committee and now we have activated, uh, a level committee. And, uh, we are looking forward to, we have a plan to implement the Lugatim Pignini Act, uh, through the Child and Family Services Council to the provinces and the districts. Uh, so, uh, I need your support, uh, at this level to liaise with the governance and the provincial administrators to, uh, establish the provincial council because that's the service delivery framework for child protection in the country. I think, uh, Chair, uh, let me stop from there and ask other questions.
So, so, thank you, Director. Is the reason for not having a meeting since twenty twenty-three again is no council, huh?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I think the reason for not, uh,
Having the National Child and Family Services Council, no meeting since twenty twenty-three.
Correct. Uh, there were meetings held, but, uh, because of the, um, uh, problem with the, uh, membership, there were no quorums. So I think there were attempts, the meeting were called, but, uh, the full operation of the meeting and the members were not, uh, operating. So, uh, in fact, yes, I can say that there was no meeting held before I came into, uh, late office.
And who appoints this council, the National Council?
Uh, National Council is appointed by the minister, but the secretariat is provided by the Office of Child and Family Services.
This is your minister, Community Development?
That's right.
Okay.
Uh, Chair, may I support, uh, uh, the, uh, Director? So the appointment of the council, it's in the act. It's already stipulates clearly who are the agencies that will be responsible, that the composition of the, uh, council is in the act.
So, and the act, uh, provides for how many council members and what's the quorum? Because quorum seems to be a problem.
Yeah, quorum is seven, uh, s- uh, according to the act.
Membership is, national membership is, uh, what's the, uh, council numbers?
I think it's twelve.
Ten or twenty?
Uh, yeah, uh, Chair, I don't have the, uh, list right now, but it should be twelve.
Twelve?
Yes.
And the quorum is seven?
Seven, yes.
Maybe that's part of the problem. How are you rectifying this problem with the quorum?
Uh, Chair, we, uh, with, uh, Secretary, uh, we had a first meeting.
You started having meeting?
Already, we already had a meeting and we are looking forward to have the new members swearing in at the next meeting. So we should have that, uh, the National Council operating before the end of this year.
So quorum might not be an issue?
Yeah, not be an issue this time.
All right, very good, okay. And, uh, in terms of the provinces and the district, the, the act provides for the council to be set up in the provinces and the district, right?
Yes, Chair, uh, we, the same replica of the instrument is also establishment of the provincial council and the district committee.
Okay, and, uh, what sort of work in terms of, uh, you know, getting, uh, the provinces and the district, maybe D D A or L L G to, um, get into alignment and set up the provincial councils and the district council? And we, uh, work towards that, uh, in that regard or?
Yes, we started off with, uh, Enga in Morobe, but, uh, uh, we need to, uh, roll the, that model to the rest of the twenty-two provinces. So we are looking forward to this in year twenty twenty-six. We are looking forward to at least cover most of the provinces, uh, to establish provincial council. Provincial council is the, is the entry point to establishing the district committees. So first thing, after, uh, reactivating the National Council, we are looking at establishing provincial council in the, the, at the rest of the provinces. And then district committee, uh, if we get the provincial council correct, then the district should be, uh, should be okay.
Have you all had some, like, briefing with all the P A's, provincial administrators? Or you all have, uh, visited the provinces, is there a secretary or director? Maybe because you are sort of, uh, autonomous. Uh, have you all ever planned to visit all the provinces or call all the provincial administrators together? So they can be brief on the requirement of the Lugatim Pignini Act and the setting up of the council? Or you're all just working out on a one-on-one basis or what's the strategy?
Chair, uh, after this meeting with the National Council, we will now concentrate on, uh, we, before the end of this year, uh, notices should be going out to all the, all the provinces, uh, across the country. Uh, so first, we are activating the first, uh, National Council and then the provincial council should be, uh, provinces should be informed of the need for them to implement the Lugatim Pignini Act through the council's establishment in all, all the provinces.
Yes, but my question was, what's the strategy? You are intending to get all the P A's together and brief them on the requirement of the act and the, the need or the compulsory requirement to set up the, uh, provincial, uh, council? Or you are all going to go province by province? You visit one province, brief the P A and maybe the governors or the P E C, uh, brief them and then leave it, give them a specific task? Or you've looked at, what was the strategy or is this just a ad hoc or random type of, uh, approach?
Chair, we've,
That's the core of my question.
We have designed a template, template to, uh, uh, formally write to all the provinces. We have, uh, did a letter requesting, uh, provinces to, uh, fill a form and submit it back to us. So for us to get to know which province is ready, uh, to start, uh, having the, uh, conversation. So, uh, we already have a template in place, uh, for the form to be given to all the provinces, to the provincial administrator. That form will be signed up by the provincial administrator and the governors. And when that is submitted to us, we will have a, uh, one-on-one consultation with them. Then through that process, we can establish, uh, 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 provincial council in each province. So, uh, the strategy we are using is to contact individually, uh, each provinces and ask them to form, uh, fill that form. Uh, so that when that form is submitted to us, which province is already prepared in terms of establishing the council, we should be concentrating on our effort on those provinces first and then, uh, uh, maybe, um, other provinces can also come in.
And maybe, Secretary, you might answer this. Uh, may, first, it's like, you can enlighten us on when was the, this Lugatim Pignini Act passed? And between that to now, I think there's a big gap. I think my assumption is that it's probably ten years ago the act was passed. So ten years, you mean walking something, something? This, uh, simple thing of, uh, you know, maybe it's not so simple, but this basic task of getting all the provincial administrators together or attending the governor's, uh, council meeting and briefing them. This is the law, this is a compulsory requirement. You are obliged to, and we give them time, that the, each of the provinces, you must set up a council by this time. So I, I understand, Mr., the Director is new, but, uh, there, there was, uh, it's, uh, late, Mr. Yanis has passed away. What did they do between the act was passed and up to now? Why we don't have the council in place by now? I think like, I, I'm just, uh, assuming it's ten years. If you can enlighten the committee and it's important for public consultation that they know.
Uh, Chair, Secretary, before, even before you answer, I think, uh, my comment will be in addition to what, uh, see, this, uh, committee is going to be addressing, uh, serious issues concerning vulnerable, uh, members of our society, children. Talking about issues of malnutrition, stunt growth and all other issues relating to children. The Lugatim Pignini Act was first in two thousand fifteen. It's two, uh, it's, we're in twenty twenty-five, it's some ten years down the line. And, uh, so I believe under the act, uh, the Director of, uh, Child Wellbeing. Uh, it used to be Mr. Yanis before.
Yes, yes.
And I think you assume that responsibility. For Secretary Obasi, you've been in this, in the job for quite some time. There's provisions in the act requiring your department and you, you, you as the head of the department to have the National Child Welfare Services Council established, constitution of the members, liaison with the provincial administrator, he needs provinces to establish the provincial council. So what the governor is saying is that what have you done since the enactment of the act in two thousand fifteen? It's some ten years down the line. What efforts have you done in forming the council, liaising with the provincial administrator and addressing these very important issues?
Doesn't make sense.
I mean, you can't be passing back here and this, you know, we are just going through a job. I have not corresponded with the provincial administrators, respective provinces to establish the provincial council. You should be taking proactive steps to address this thing. So maybe it's a matter for you as the Secretary, because you've been in that office for quite some time. And you'll be worst, worst with the problems, the issues affecting the department. And for the record, I think your minister is not here. He seems to be the most trouble minister in the current government. Every time there's inquiry, your minister is out overseas. Maybe he's bringing good returns to the government in terms of addressing the issues that we are trying to address as a committee here. Thank you.
I appreciate this.
Secretary.
Thank you, Chair. And, uh, thank you, uh, Parliament Member, thank you. Uh, Sir, so, um, the act, as we all fully aware, it's, uh, was in twenty fifteen. And, uh, I believe, uh, when the act was, uh, when the act was passed, uh, through the Office of Child and Family Services and at that time, through the leadership of Anna Bice, the Secretary, uh, probably, I believe there was some awareness being conducted in terms of the new act itself. And, um, also, I want to take this time to thank you, thank UNICEF. I think during this time, UNICEF was also very supportive in terms of assisting the Office of Child and Family Services instead of, uh, uh, disseminating information about the new act itself. Uh, Sir, the Chair, the issue arises when, uh, the department, uh, we, normally the secretary assumed the role as chairman. Uh, the, under the act, it requires the Director or C E O to be the proxy, uh, to the council. So in terms of coordinating meeting, the C E O as the proxy, it, that's his responsibility to inform the chairman as to when and when we should conduct a meeting. So having said that, that responsibility now falls back to, uh, the former Director, late Simon Yanis. Uh, that was his responsibility to ensure that me- meetings are conducted. Uh, the meeting was so, under the act, it was supposed to be conducted on a four-month basis, like three times in a year. Unfortunately, at that time, I was, uh, the Deputy Secretary and the, uh, yeah, Deputy Secretary at that time. So I saw that there were no meetings conducted. So like I said, I cannot speak on someone else's failure, uh, on that part. But, uh, when I assumed the role as a secretary and when Mr. Wap was appointed, because at that time, Mr. Yanis was ill and he was not able to take up the office too at that time. So during the absent, um, the minister appointed Mr. Wap in December. But that was only a ministerial appointment. The appointment needs to go to N E C for, to confirm his, uh, acting appointment. So since his appointment in March this year, that's when, Sir, uh, Chairman, we started to get the ball rolling in terms of most of the things that we have not been doing as a department and as a council going forward. So we, through the leadership of, uh, Mr. Wap, we have staged our first meeting, uh, last week. Uh, we had the quorum, everybody turned up for the meeting. And we've planned for two other meeting in October thirty-one and November. November seventeen this year. So we want to put in mechanism in place to address some of those issues that has been, um, backlog of issues that has not been addressed prior to, like, like, Chair, we cannot blame someone that we will, we would need to shoulder that responsibility and try to address where issues are. We are making a start. We had the first meeting. Uh, the next meeting will be on the thirty-first, is to reappoint the board members because the tenure of three years as being board members has expired. So we will do that on the thirty-first of October and new members will be appointed. From there, we will put in place mechanisms, what we need to do going forward.
Okay, Secretary, very good that, uh, some progress are taking place. But, uh, the concept of our committee expressed by myself and member for Karamoysol Nomanay is that twenty years gap here. Why, why we didn't get this council in place like five years ago, two years ago? It's not rocket science. Uh, so what is the impediment? And how are we correcting that impediment now? Is it the, the act or is it, uh, maybe the, the, the act caters for too big of, uh, council members? Seven or twelve or maybe it's too big? Maybe you may cut him down, he come long, five or something, yeah? Why, what is the rationale for having, uh, twelve council members? Uh, and then you come to the provinces too and if you ask us to come up with, uh, twelve council members, like me just getting, uh, a committee meet, meeting in Parliament now, this, this gentleman, they are all busy people. And I try to get them to come and have a quorum. Hey, I have to message them, uh, you know, every day, every night to harass them. Uh, so I try to keep the quorum small. So I've told the head of government business, increase the numbers, but keep the quorum small, like four. Then I can be able to have a, conduct a, you know, a, a committee meeting or inquiry. Uh, so maybe late Mr. Yanis had a problem with, uh, the, the, the membership being big, uh, quorum is big, seven, how are you going to get seven people to come and meet? That might be a problem, but, uh, m- might be part of the problem. Maybe the other part of the problem is the person being appointed. Maybe we are not appointing right people. Right people being maybe the director or right people being the council members. They don't understand their work. Uh, so, uh, moving forward, I think it's important that you all understand the failures of the last ten years. Ten years is not a, you know, ten years failure is Ten years is not a, you know, ten years failure is very poor indication for us, for your department and for the, you know. What's that office now? Office of Child and Family Services. It's a very poor indicator indication, we passed the law in twenty fifteen, but no one planned to something come up. Why we pass a law? Here we are, we are trying to, you know, do as much and we all talk about our children. Our children is the future, but we are not putting the effort and energy and, you know. Our attention to achieving that outcome. So it's not a good, you know, testimony for us that in ten years we did virtually not much. So moving forward, I think, Secretary, you all need to understand what are the impediments? Is it the membership or is it the law, is it the, the person, you know, we appointed or what was it? Then we clear it up, then you all come to the province to, getting the national council is becoming ten years effort. We cannot wait for another ten years for the provincial council to be set up. And then we are going down to the district, will it take another thirty years or? We're not doing well. So the parliament has set up this committee to put a spotlight on your department and education department, minister is here. Thank you Minister and Secretary and also on the health department and all the provincial government. The message, as I in my opening remarks, for the next fifty years, but starting now. We have to put attention, effort and energy to the children because they are the next fifty years. You may, you to play stuff now, people are lining stuff here, all young boys stuff member for many area is in his prime. But some of us, maybe the clock is ticking, so. But you know, the, our children depend on what we do now. And we will fail them if we repeat the ten years. So please learn the lessons of the last ten years and rectify it. Now the big task is to go to the, get your council right at the national level and come down to the provinces. So we have not been approached, I can speak for myself, I've not been approached by Director Yo. And I don't want us to, you know, pass blame, he's passed away, so. But I, we, I've not been approached here even in the capital city, hey governor, you need to set up a, a council. In the capital city, you haven't got the capital city right. You can get the other provinces right. Here we are just, you know, just, we are living together in one city. But we have not got the council right or going in the city. Central Province is next though. You don't have to travel far, you can just call them to their, central provincial headquarters is here at Konedobu. So you can do two sub-national governments one goal, NC D and Central Province, one goal. And Gulf Province too, most of them, they are, you know, they hang around here, that's another story. Maybe you can do three provinces in one goal here in our capital city. But it's taken us ten years, so this is a big concern for us at the, at the committee level, happy and parliament. And it's, it's the, our failure, you know, might not be, we, we feel the failure, but it's the children. And I can speak about the children here in the city that after now, we've been focusing especially on the GBB. But I, I suspect and from the, all the indications that we have the children in terms of violence against children, neglect of children. Poor nutrition, even in our capital city is a big problem. So if we start getting this council right, then they will start helping all of us, helping me to, to manage, you know, all the different challenges that we face. All right, Secretary, maybe you just want to speak to that or we can go on to the other part of the question? Yes, yes.
Thank you, just one commentary on regarding, Chairman S S expressed a lot of disappointment about the committee not being setting.
Council.
A council not been set up and not effective. See, it's ten years down and now you see when you, we see the issues that are happening in the country. About the youths and our children and family, family and child is the, is important and it is the nucleus of. Setting the foundation for the country. And if we don't give that priority, if you see, you, your office is the nucleus that can run the country. And sets the direction for the country, family is the lifeline and our children is the lifeline. So if we don't give that attention and if we don't give that care in running a committee or in running. The council or setting up the council, then we are throwing away our country and our children and our future. So you have to understand that family is the important and family is the nucleus of a country. When family is right and when children are okay, whatever we do in the country, we'd be okay. So most of the time, we are focusing on sending them to school and say our teacher will teach them and they'll be okay, no. When we teach the family and the parent in the, at home and giving them the right education and then teaching them the right. Or setting them, giving them the right direction, that's where real education begins and that's where we will set the direction for the country. So the office that you hold is the very important office. To give the right direction and to give the right teaching to the nucleus and in the family. So whatever that transpires in the family goes out into the world, into the streets and comes out into the cities and the country. So I would like to emphasize that. From now forward, we don't have to do the blame game since now from this day, now fifty years. And after this, we have to focus on setting up and making this, this council work. Because your job is very important. So going forward, forget about the blame game now, going forward, what can we do? And identify what's the issue and let's address those issue and set up the council and then we can walk, move forward from this day forward. Thank you Chairman.
Alaska, thank you, thank you Chairman. My question is not related to that inquiry, but in general, my good secretary, how many number of acts do you look after? Like acts of parliament, are you?
Under the department?
Yes, under the department.
Thank you, committee member and member for Wawa here. Okay, for the department itself, we have other, other functions in the ministry like the Office of Lookout in Pekingini Act. All administering the Lookout in Pekingini Act, censorship, they have their own act. The National Youth Development Authority, they have on their own act. For us as a main department, mainstream department, we just passed two act recently this year. This is the only two act that we administer, by maybe administering that Community Development Bill and the Disability Service Bill. That's the two new act, but others prior to that, as a department, we align agency for the government, we don't have any act. So the only act that we passed, the two act was this year.
Okay, from the, from this two act, legislation you passed, I mean, under your, under your department. Do they have the separate budget or do they come, you, from the budget is drawn from your department?
Thank you, sir. So from the department, the program that we administer, we have separate budget lines. Likewise for the Office of Child and Family Services, since two thousand twenty, they receive full funding from the national government in terms of the PIP. Recurrent, they are responsible for their own activity likewise for youth and censorship. So we have our separate budget lines, we do administer our own programs separately.
Okay, thank you Secretary.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Secretary and Mister Wap, perhaps you can just comment generally on our concern about the failure for the last ten years. Less than then and how we can rectify. Then you all can start to focus on the other questions which are equally important. The, the, what is this, the child protection offices, the budget. And all those other questions that are, have been sent to you. I'm just mentioning that because your timeline was about eleven thirty, but we exceeded that with the Department of Health. And Minister and Secretary also here, so let's be sensitive to that.
Thank you Chair and our committee members, the leaders. So we, like I said, we prepared the response already, so Mister Wap will go through. But sir, I just want to speak on the establishment of the council and why things has not moved the way it's supposed to move. I think, sir, I will not give an excuse here, but this is a leadership issue between us during that time. Where we supposed to be coordinating those issues and work together. Like during my time as a deputy and officer down the line manager, I saw that the secretary and. The CEO at that time do not talk together in terms of making things work. So maybe this is one of the issues that has, that's an impediment that has not allowed us to progress to what we are being today. Maybe one tries to, don't want to intervene in someone else's problems or issues, that's why we have not come this far.
Secretary, you mentioned CEO, who's the CEO you're referring to?
I was, I was referring to the former director and the former secretary. Like I said, if they have worked together and tried to administer the act and get the committee council in place, we should not have those issues. But I don't want to like save blames, like I now assume the role as secretary as the chairman and we have the new CEO. So we have learnt from those past.
Yeah, but, but Secretary, if there is a problem, you, you have the opportunity now to identify this problem. And then it will be part of our recommendation to parliament.
Yes.
Like maybe they are too autonomous and they are not subject to supervision and you are getting the blame. You know, backlash comes back to you and the minister. But because you all have created a legal situation where the Office of Child and Family Services are autonomous. They work on their own, no supervision by you all or you all don't have oversight. Now they can do things or not do things and you still get the backlash. So if that is a problem, then it's our responsibility to report to parliament to fix it. So you have the opportunity now, Secretary, is it the problem or not?
Thank you, thank you Chair and all the leaders here. So like I said previously, it's a problem, but now I think we have that understanding and we have now moved.
Secretary, that understanding is, it's personal understanding or it's by? That's my earlier question, you are looking after only two acts and this act is on its own. So you are expected to provide a report on his, his role. So this, this understanding, is it, is it by policy or is it by legislation? What's the understanding?
Thank you, member for, sir. The act, in the act stipulates that whoever, whoever is the secretary for Department of Community Development will assume the role as chairman. So like I said, during my past experience as an officer in the department, I saw those impediments. So when I was appointed as a secretary and then when CEO assumed the role, I have now, we will try to rectify those issues. Those impediments that has prevented us from moving the office forward. So going forward from here forward, we will establish a proper council, we will get the mechanism in place. We will get all the provinces to establish their own provincial councils of a child council and we will move those things forward. So we've learnt from those experience and sir, yeah, I mean, it's, it's an issue, but I believe that the Office of Child and Family Services. Should operate on their own and they must report straight to the minister on the issues in, in, in terms of their operation. So in that way.
Okay, Secretary, but I understand what you are saying, but these impediments or whatever has cost us ten years, ten years. So definitely there's something amiss here. So we have to identify it so that we make sure that we don't waste another ten years. You might have a good understanding with the director now, Mister Wap, but it might be just at your personal level. We have to institutionalize, you know, we have to come up with institutional correction. So this is where, if you have not thought about it now, before coming here, we are putting your notice now. So whatever you can go and think about it and if there's a real issue that contribute to ten years. Ten years of failure, we've, we've got to fix it now. Because through our committee now, we can see that there's a problem. We are making all this office becoming autonomous, but if it's not working, then we must fix it. So think about that now and you have a written report, but you can still do another report to us so that we bring our recommendation to parliament. Maybe we go to Mister Wap.
Thank you Chair.
Please, maybe you go through all the questions so we can question you. If there's any questions that we want to raise, we will give you one line of question and then we will go to Minister and Secretary for Education.
Okay, thank you Chair and the members of the committee. We fully understand the challenges and weaknesses we had. And I am taking now the responsibility to work with. Secretary is the only chair to the committee, but it depends on my performance to help that committee. Now I want to tell the special parliamentary committee that the council will be operating. Now we will be seeking support from the local members and the provincial administrator to roll out the provincial council. So by this year, we should make.
Director, why, if we are going to recommend to parliament that you stop being an autonomous organization and come back under the department, what would you think? Would it be a good idea or not? And from the evidence, it might be a good idea. The intention is noble for you all to become autonomous so that you can run, you know, and get things going. But you all become autonomous and you all put a big break for ten years, not much happened. So we have to rectify this, so I'm asking you putting on notice. What is, what would you think about this idea that we change the law and then put you all back under the department? You all become just an agency or division of the department, insertable to the secretary. So that if you are not performing, the secretary will crack the whip on you all. So what do you think about it?
Child protection is a huge function in terms of responsibility that we have, it's much bigger. Just like any other constitutional office. In terms of non-performance and not having the committee, it depends on me as the head of that office. And I'm giving you the confidence that I will have those committees to, the chair is only the chair to that. And as the head of the office, have a responsibility to call up that committee as a secretary to that council.
In terms of the, you're new on the job, perhaps Secretary Wubasi can answer? What has been the problem? Is it party constraints or there is lack of political will or, or the person occupying the hot seat doesn't know what is required to do?
Thank you.
I mean, I understand, I am a lawyer by profession, so obviously I would understand the provisions of the lookout in Pekingini Act. So you might make it my business to read it during working hours or after hours. For example, if there's a layman coming and occupying the, as the minister for community development. I would expect the secretary and line officers down the department to fully brief him. Every time a new minister comes in to take up the, sorry. Yeah, so government, what has been the problem? Has the government not been finding the office of director of child welfare or is the Department of Finance and planning not? Sending money appropriate in the national budget to the office of the Ministry of Community Development? To run this particular office, National Family Services Council and the provincial branches. So what the chairman is asking is what? So what the chairman is asking is what is the problem? What has been the problem? The act was passed in two thousand fifteen, we are in twenty twenty five. What has your department done in terms of addressing these issues? This is what he brought in his. I mean, I would want to know. The country wants to know. The development partners here, Unicef, would want to know. I'm sure they've probably been assisting the government in terms of counterparty for some of these projects. So they would want to know. You have the chair now, so you tell the committee, maybe for the, are they we on?
Yes.
So that's the question that's the, uh, chairman is asking. What has been the problem all these years? We understand Mr. Yanis, the late Mr. Yanis passed on, you two on board, but during that time, you know, you can be passing blame game. Somebody is obviously not doing his job, right?
Thank you.
Director.
Like I said, uh, the Office of Child and Family Services is the secretary at, uh, to that, uh, national council. Uh, the operation of the council depends on my performance, not the chair. Chair is the secretary to the department. And, uh, I think from this time onwards, the committee should be functioning and we already had that, uh, meeting, uh, previously, we already started having that meeting, we had a forum. So going forward, uh, we have identified the problem and the national council should be operating. And I think I, we should not have any more problem with having the committee, uh, operating. So I mean, that's a, uh, guarantee I can give it to the, uh, uh, committee. What has happened, like you said, we cannot blame whoever was there, late Yanis and the management in the past. Uh, going forward, we should have the committee, uh, operating and roll out the provincial council to all provinces. So, uh, what we have now is we are concentrating on the national council and year twenty twenty six, we should be, uh, my office, uh, will be, uh, seeking support and partnership from the provinces and the governors to help me establish the provincial council.
Uh, Director, you saw in, under your, obviously you have a development plan or strategic plan or, uh, some sort of plan in place? Your annual corporate plan?
Yes, uh.
You have a corporate plan?
Yes. Yes, I have corporate plan.
Okay, in in that corporate plan, uh, that is the strategy to implement those provincial councils and timeframe? Provincial child welfare councils?
Yes.
And timeframe in those, in this corporate? What's the year for that corporate plan?
Twenty twenty five to twenty twenty seven.
Okay, so in this, uh, corporate plan, there's a strategy or there's a timeframe in that to implement those, uh, provincial council?
Provincial councils.
Provincial councils.
Yes, uh, in that plan, we we activate the first national council, which we already, uh, started and in twenty twenty six going forward, we are looking forward to establish the provincial council.
So that's in that plan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Have you got the funding to implement, you know, that strategy?
No, funding has been a challenge to us and, uh, um, we are looking forward for support in, uh, twenty twenty six.
Have you got a budget for rolling out this, um, you know, this plan to set up all the, uh, the, the provincial and, uh, district level councils? Is there a budget line in that corporate plan or you all just come up with a plan and no budget?
Uh, we we requested budget for twenty twenty six.
All right, but in that corporate plan, there is no budget, uh, sort of, uh, estimate attached with it or is there?
Yes, we do.
And have have that, uh, plan and budget been presented to, uh, Treasury and National Planning and Treasury?
Yes, we submitted this year for next year, twenty twenty six.
All right, and, um, but what about in the past? Did you get any support for this, uh? This might be an impediment that, uh, Department of Fin, uh, Planning and the planning is going to come, so we are, you know, having this conversation. So when planning come, me blah blah, you thinking about beginning need to or putting money long, when we are setting up this council or not? They've been asking you for all these donkey years and ten years has left and maybe it's the national planning or maybe it's the treasury or maybe it's finance not remitting money to you all. So you two have an opportunity to tell us now, so we will do the report to Parliament, huh? And, uh, we have to be very damning when we report to Parliament because this is not good for us, huh? So who is responsible? Maybe you two are responsible or maybe it's national planning, uh, only giving you more money or maybe it was factored in the budget, but, uh, you know, uh, finance did not remit the money to you all, huh? So it is our responsibility to untangle all this too and recommend to Parliament that we fix this now, huh? If we are going to give our children the next fifty years to twenty seventy five, a better life than blow you me coming up now. People are somebody working nothing, nothing like coming up now, yeah? But our children, we can absolutely make a difference for them, but the way we are are doing up to now, we're, we're working nothing, nothing yet. So that's why we are laboring on it. You have a corporate plan, which is good. What happened to this corporate plan? There is a budget, which is good. Was it submitted to national planning? And if so, what was the outcome before? Secretary, you have a tour?
The, um.
Uh, what the director here is was appointed this year, so.
Thank you, thank you.
He might have been there before, so he might know, he might not know, but you have been, you know, being the secretary maybe in the last three years or four years or something of same, so you would have some idea.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Me like, uh, respond low question low remember low caramui, no money. It's like issue for the, then I'll come to you, Chair. So, uh, to be frank, um, we have a leadership issue at that time. So, uh, heads not working together and that has now created this problem to be at that time, so we were unable to implementing more programs now. I mean, okay, from two thousand twenty, the, uh, Office of Child and Family Services and Detention Law Department, so full funding, everything was allocated. So I won't blame the government, government did what they have did. It's ourselves as a department and the leadership at that time failed to ensure that the council members and programs were implemented at that time. Uh, so I would, I would, uh, ye- yes. So this is the challenge that we have been experiencing, maybe the two heads at that time, department and the Office of Child Welfare, we're not working together to implement, so.
Yeah, but Secretary, this is the problem, like, you know, it it's probably an institutional thing, but you are not admitting it, huh?
Yes, yes, sir, I'm I'm admitting that.
We have to take corrective measures, you know, this is a personal difference.
Yeah.
Cannot be an impediment to the work of the government and service delivery, huh?
Yes.
And if it's an impediment, then we have to, you know, ever look at the law again so that you continue to have some oversight, huh? Let's say now you're working well with Mr. Wape, but what if another person is appointed? Now, I'm not like, what, what do you? How are you going to rein this person to come and say, you are not doing, doing your work? Who's going to take, you know, him to account? Will it be the minister or it must come back to you? You are the secretary. The box stops with you. And the backlash come back to you now. The minister depends on you and our people depend on you and the ten years, this is too much. Ten years of no progress is not a good. We must fix it for the future now. Anyway, Secretary, finish the conversation and, uh, there's a lot of, uh, other points that, uh, Director has to address.
Chairman, can I say something?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Chairman, uh, thank you. In my, uh, past life as a, a private person, uh, I had a lot of dealings with, uh, child welfare. We, we ran a little, uh, program where we would, uh, rescue, uh, mothers and kids. And one of the greatest impediments was the Office of the Child Welfare.
Yeah.
They did a lot of snake bales. They protect a lot of perpetrators, perpetrators that were, the fathers were paid who were abusing children. So I think, uh, I'm really glad to have a new, uh, director there and we must have a fresh start and what happened in the past must not be repeated. There's a ten years of neglect and now, uh, whilst we are talking, the kids are getting abused, the kids are, uh, the, the primary objective of this subject and, uh, we, we just need to fix it, Secretary and Director, we just need to fix it because in, 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 in our past experiences with, uh, Office of Child, Child Welfare, we had no support when we wanted to rescue kids. For example, in Layer or other provinces, we wanted to fly away and rescue the kids, uh, the, the Child Welfare Office never gave us any help. They always ask for money, ask for tips. So this is, this is some, some of the impediments that, uh, I hope will, will not be, uh, repeated. They even, uh, did some snake bales for perpetrators aided and abated by the Office of the Child Welfare. So I had that, uh, first experience, so I'm just reporting that as now a member of Parliament and a part, part of this committee. So we need to, uh, look at those impediments and we need to, uh, put an, uh, put an end and this ten year gap, it stops now. It's a new chapter and this committee is, is ready to, uh, support you, Director. So let's move forward because, uh, the Child Welfare Office, uh, uh, I've, I've had a lot of bad experiences with them personally in, in my past life, so I'm just putting that on record, Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, member not with West, thank you, uh, Secretary and Director, these are the co-issues and we are not addressing the co-issue because we are stuck with this institutional thing. We are stuck with the leadership or whatever petty differences, huh? In the city, I can vouch for what, you know, uh, my member here is saying. You can see it every day in Port Mursi. Children are neglected, there probably high level of violence in the so-called, um, you know, all these, uh, what is it, uh? Houses, uh, institution that are being set up to cater for the children, what they called it?
Safe house.
Not safe house? Ofenages or so on, there's no supervision. Adults are looking after the children and who is supervising these adults? And, uh, we've already had, you know, reports directly and indirectly of abuses in these , uh, ofenages, huh? He got inspector going here, child protectors going on. We have not gone back to the substance of the families, uh, fathers and mothers are neglecting their children, they're running wild on the street though, no mentoring or, uh, nutrition is a problem, huh? So many real issues that we are going to address. We can't address that because we are stuck with this problem of institution, huh? And we've got to fix it now, huh? So, uh, Director, please, uh, address all the other question, otherwise you, your, your time is, is up already, you may have bruised some time, please, here.
Sorry.
Just give us an overview of it, but, uh, like the Department for Health, you, your written submission, you can submit it, uh, so we ever look at what you, uh, have written, we might, um, have to summon you all again to come before the inquiry again so we get stuck to do some of these things so that we can make the recommendation, huh? You help us to make the recommendation, we are here to support you all, huh? It's, 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 uh, it's bad, but we are exposing it now so that let's, uh, you know, find a solution now, huh?
Director, can you, can you, can you, uh?
Give us a summary.
Give you, can you give assurance to this chair, this committee that by two thousand twenty six, you will set up all provinces, provincial council? Can you also, uh, give assurance to this committee? No, well, it depends on the budget, you find the budget.
We are here to help you find the budget.
Help you to find the budget, so can you give assurance to this committee that by two, end of two thousand twenty six, you will set up all the provincial, uh, child welfare councils?
Thank you, Chair and Honorable Member.
Then we will put you, uh, in the next one query, we'll ask you about that.
Thank you.
And a district, district, what? But set up provinces first and then we can, the province can set up the districts.
Uh, Honorable Member and the Chair and the members of the Special Parliamentary Committee, I, uh, commit to this, uh, uh, government that I will, my office will, uh, take the lead. We have already started the process with establishment of the, uh, re- reactivating the national council and going forward twenty twenty six, we will, uh, establish, start communicating with the provinces and establish the council. One of the, uh, leading problem was the capacity for the Office of Child and Family Services. Uh, I have the structure here is not fully implemented. Having some of the questions that you have asked, I need to help the capacity for, uh, for Office of Child and Family Services. So this has some, uh, problems that I, yes, financial capacity, I also need to have the human resource professional capacity to help me lead this. At the, at this time, I have only less than fifteen professional, they are case officers, but I need policy strategic people who need to help me to establish and coordinate this. And I need your support and I'm, I'm privileged to be here. Uh, while I'm here also, I want to acknowledge my important partners like Unicef, who has been supporting me on this, uh, Child Fund, Sabla Children, uh, Family PNG and some other NGOs and international partners who have been helping me on this. I sincerely thank them in front of you all, uh, for, if we had to decentralize the Child and Family Services, uh, uh, mandate to all the provinces and districts and wards, we, I agree with you that we need to establish the provincial council. Provincial council is the entry point to the district committee and then to work committees and volunteers. So we have that in plan and we need your support and I'm so thankful to be here. Uh, I guarantee, I, I promise that we will start that process, uh, in twenty twenty six. Like I said, funding is a problem, we know, uh, it's, uh, funding resources always a problem to other programs as well, uh, but, uh, if we are given some funds next year, I think, uh, we will try our very best to.
Yeah, but Director, you're not talking me blah blah budget, will you? We are going to ask the national planning and.
Yes.
Treasury and finance after this. It's our job to bring them to account, why are they not putting money to support your office, huh? And then you have not help us, I ask you a specific question, you got budget or not, huh? But you have not given me, but maybe you will submit that to us the corporate plan and we can ask the, you know, national planning when they come on after the, after lunch, yeah?
Sure, thank you. I have two, uh, PIPs, one is the child protection and, uh, out of home care. Uh, child protection is, uh, council establishment command at the child protection and, uh, out of home care, addressing street children, we have started those process already. If you, I think time cannot allow me to go through some of the work I did on the street children program, uh, but in twenty twenty six, uh, Chair, I submitted, uh, both, uh, PIPs, national planning, uh, I'm looking forward to the support, uh, uh, by looking at the rise of street children issue and the need for addressing child welfare and , uh, family protection issue in the country. So, uh, with that, uh.
Before you and, uh, Minister and, uh, Secretary Education, please, uh, with your concurrence, we will just ask this final question, I think. Um, Director, before you and Secretary and, uh, can you just give us a brief on the effort towards setting up the, um, child protection officers? I think one of the things that we need to roll out, here in Musby, I need the child protection officers. We, we have started with the GBB, setting up the, you know, all the, uh, what is it? The police, uh, unit. Yeah, not, not just the reservists, but the, you know, having the. FSV SU officers in the police force, huh? So that's targeted at, uh, GBB. The child protection officers are targeted at protecting children, so what is your effort in this, uh, respect and how many child protection officers have you all trained and, uh, how they, how, how are the provinces faring or are you, are we still stuck like, you know, with the council or we have some child protection officers being trained and already operating?
Uh, Chair, I have one hundred and thirty child protection officers.
Okay.
But I have a issue with, uh, the way the child protection officers in the country. Uh, so this child protection officers are community development officers, uh, that means they are the, the Department for Community Development who are operating in, in the provinces. And through this council establishment process, uh, I'm looking for to advocate for specific child protection officers need to be trained so that when that is restructured, uh, or there's change in the, uh, provincial administration, the districts, they are not removed and given another position so that the child protection officers are recognized and who are implementing the LPA specifically. So, uh, uh, going forward, I mean, through this process, council establishment process, we should have a child protection specifically to implement the LPA, the Luca and Piquini Act. But as it is now, gadgeted child protection officers who are doing, uh, child protection, uh, about hundred and thirty. And, uh, in the next council meeting, we will, uh, gadget another, uh, about fifty who are trained. about fifty, who are trained but waiting to be gadgeted. So before the end of this year, we should at least have one hundred eighty child protection officers.
All right, thank you, Director. Secretary, please, both of you, submit a written submission, and more particularly, any issues that is faced, especially by the director and his office. It need to be highlighted so that we can make the recommendation to parliament. If it's about structure or legal system, institutional system, we need to know. If it's about funding, we need to know. So our committee here is to work with you all, to find solution and to clear the way so that we are all working in unison to make, do all we can for our children. We are not here to be your tormentors or something, even though today might be not a good session, but it's good that we have given you that platform, and we have expressed the concern of the parliamentaryans and concern of our people, so we need to, you know, get things right into the future. So please, give us a comprehensive report. Highlight any particular areas that we need to address, and then we will help you all to move forward, yeah?
Thank you, Chair. Before we leave, I want to appeal to the Chair through you and through the committee, parliamentary committee, parliamentary committee, Treasury and National Planning. The way I see in terms of budget preparations, they are not focusing on children, women, persons with disability. So I think once they go through the budget, we always get the lowest slice of budget under the ministry. So if they can be asked, what kind of criteria do they use to assess, us as a government agency to implement programs for the most vulnerable and marginalized communities that we have in the country? We tend to have the same budget over and over. ODW has a missionary arm for women, we get nothing. And we rely on other PIPs to ensure that we vouch for programs for us, likewise for Office of Child and Family Services. The office is there. It's established since twenty twenty. But the amount of budget that is given to support the program, it's not there. So we just want to appeal. Why Treasury using, do they have certain criteria that they judge are at the agencies, as all agencies in terms of implementing their program, we want to know. If there's any impediment on our side, they should tell us so that we can improve and write amount of budget appropriation should be given appropriately. Thank you, Chair.
Secretary, thank you. We will definitely raise this question with the with the National Planning and Treasury when they come on, hopefully this afternoon. But it goes both ways, Secretary and Director. If you do a good plan, and you execute it, and you achieve outcome, I'm sure the government and the development partners will be keen to support you all. So the honor goes back on you all to come up with a good plan, roll it out, whether it's in women, or disability, or children, or sports, or youth. And it's getting resolved. Everybody wants to support, you know, good projects and good outcomes. And be transparent, do acquittal and so on, so that people can trust us. Part of our problem is our problem, and, you know, we all want to acknowledge our development partners, but my attitude, like, for me, running the city, you know, my approach is that I use whatever money I have. I wish government could give me more money, but I can, whatever they've given me, I have to maximize it and show that I can do and deliver outcomes, and then maybe they will support me. Secondly, my attitude too is that whether they are from Mars Jupiter, or from another planet or something, but it can help me to get the job done. I'll get the job done, because I have to think about my people, or my constituent, or our children, or our country. Too many times, we hang up with, you know, getting all our friends to be appointed here, appointed there, or we don't look at merits. And if we don't have the expertise, UNICEF is here, they can scan the world to help you two. Let's not hesitate in that regard, to project right, or to develop program, or to monitor it, or to implement. Our development partners are here. That's part of their job. So I'm just giving you this perspective, but absolutely, we'll pass, we'll question them when they come. Thank you, Secretary and Director, Mr. Wape. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chair, and all the parliamentary committee members. Thank you for your time.
Yes, you are a good supporter of you. Good start, all of us, yeah? Minister, Secretary, Education, please, take your place in front, and we can have the. We are going to lunchtime, and we started about half an hour late, so I apologize for taking your time, and everybody's time. I'm trying to manage time as well, so we can get the work done. All right, firstly, on behalf of the committee, I thank you, Minister, for coming before the committee. The invitation went to you, and I'm very pleased that you are able to come. And Secretary is here too with your team, so thank you, Minister, for making yourself available. This committee is holding its first committee inquiry for the first time, so. But as you all can see, we are focused on the children. We are focused on the future. We have seen what happened in the last fifty years. We have done all we can, but the next fifty years, if we want to reset and transform and lift our country and our people, it requires us to invest in the children. The children are the generation of the next fifty years. Minister, you and I, maybe time will, sunset will come, yeah? But you must think about beginning, so what we do now will define the life of our children and life of our country, so. This committee is being created at the right time. It's part of the resetting, so I am very pleased that Parliament, you may look at, I agree the committee. I am privileged to be chairing this committee, and I thank all the committee members for volunteering to be on it. But we are here to work with you, Minister and Secretary, to achieve the outcomes that education in particular can help us achieve for the children. So I think Minister and Secretary, just by an overview, our main concern is about firstly, like retention. Retention from primary to secondary, a problem, yeah? And I think the statistics seems to show that about eighty-plus percentage of our children gets to primary. But when they go to secondary, it drops, yeah? So that's a big problem. I think second, maybe concern that we have is about about early childhood, how that program, it's a good plan, Minister and Secretary? Recommendation to you two for formulating the early childhood plan, but I think our concern now is, and what we want to inquire about is how is it being rolled out, and how is the plan going and so on? So there's a list of questions that we have sent out to you, Minister and Secretary, so I will leave it to you two, Minister and Secretary, you introduce your team, and then, Minister, you can give an opening remark, and Secretary can back you up.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a very important committee, and we are pleased to be invited in this ongoing inquiry. Congratulations on all of you to be members of this important committee. I, with me, the Secretary, my two deputies, Ms. Merro and Mr. Kanawi, and FAES, NCD. We will be happy to answer everything and everything that you send us, the committee sent to us. But, Chairman, if I may, take a little bit of the time, I will just go through, give an overview of what we want to present to the committee, and then the Secretary and the staff of the Department, the senior staff will go through the details with the policies and everything. So let me start this way. Thank you for summoning us, my department, to this special committee on children and youth. As Minister of the current government, I congratulate you on taking on this very important, special, important assignment you have with the members. Chairman, I will make a very brief remark, and then let my department and staff through, go through the details. Firstly, I, me as Minister, I've got only one line. I'm guided by only one line, and that summarizes everything, and that is, my goal as Minister is to assist, develop and groom our citizens into god-fearing, law-abiding citizens, who must be able to sustain their lives anywhere in the world. This is my one line, that summarizes everything that I want to do for the under the Education Ministry. I go on to what we are doing. Our overarching theme is to provide a quality education for all, and leaving no child behind. Our context and strategic vision is quality education for all, and that's a government priority. The National Education System reform is a top priority for the Marabero government, committed to achieving quality education for all and leaving no child behind. Scale of the system, the National Department of Education is the largest government department overseeing two-point-five million students, seventy thousand teachers, and thirteen thousand schools. Our strategic frameworks, our work is guided by the National Education Plan NEPE twenty twenty to twenty twenty-nine, which is translated into three-year corporate and provincial education implementation plans. Our early childhood education implementation progress and critical needs. Formal integration, ECE is, or Early Childhood Education, is now formally integrated into the National Education System following the National Executive Council approval of the ECE policy in August twenty twenty. The new structure, early childhood education is defined as two pre-formal years, kindergarten one for age four, and kindergarten two for age five. Before compulsory education begins, at the primary preparatory grades, at grades eight six. This aligns well with the one new one-six-six policy. So at this juncture, we have to make it clear that early childhood education is not about actual teaching. It's about getting all the kids together, keeping them together in a controlled environment, and preparing them to go to formal education system. We, the pilot rollout, we have established the first twelve early childhood education schools in six pilot provinces. Curriculum and qualification, we have developed a new early childhood curriculum, including the unique strand, God, Bible, and child. The minimum qualification for early childhood teachers is a grade twelve certificate and a diploma in early childhood education. Addressing the bottlenecks, teacher integration and funding. A critical issue is the integration of early childhood teachers into the teaching service. Early childhood teachers are not yet members of the teaching service. We have submitted a proposal to the NEC in twenty twenty-five, highlighting the current, the urgent need for seventy-five million to begin the process of integrating early childhood teachers and funding their salaries. The submission recommends that state cover salaries, curriculum, and training, while operational costs and introsacts afford to parents, communities, and allergies. There is a critical shortage of permanent preschool classrooms, adequate toilets, and drinking water facilities. Many existing early childhood centers are not formally registered with the National Department of Education, which prevents them from receiving official recognition, government support, and funding. Improving transition retention and pathways. Eliminating dropouts, the Ministry has taken the bold action of phasing out the grade eight and grade ten selections. That's the biggest conception that many of us, or many of our people have been.